I would like to call to the school meeting for May 5th. Please rise to the place to speak.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Full of silence? Thank you, please be seated. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. The recording of this meeting will be available at wb-kim.org website. Our first order of business is to introduce our new members. I'd like to introduce Mrs. Perry Weach and Mr. JP Waller. Welcome to the committee, thank you for your service, appreciate it. Next, we have the reorganization of our school committee members and I will open the floor for discussion and nominations for chairperson.
I would like to make a motion to vote for Craig A. for president. I feel she's committed to always making our schools better for everyone and she's just so committed year after year she's been on here, so I would just like to vote for president.
I'd love to be president, but I'll take chair instead. No, I actually would not like to be president, that would be quite awful. A second. Okay, any discussion? I'm happy to continue. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Oh, thank you. So I would like to make a motion to nominate Kara Lizardi as vice chair. You stepped right up last year and you're like getting your hands in it, so is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I would like to second that, I mean she showed a lot of dedication her first year and she really cares about our students in this position, so.
Thanks, my student. Happy to do us.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, so moved. And then I'd also like to make a motion for Christine Myscosy as clerk. I think we should just continue what we're doing.
A second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, so my first order of business is I'm actually going to make a motion to change the agenda slightly. So next on the agenda, we do have subcommittee appointments, but this will be a relatively lengthy discussion. So I'm going to make a motion to move subcommittee appointments to after recognitions, but before the approval of minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion or objections? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, so that goes to recognitions.
All right. First, we have the West Bridgewater CPAC Grant of gratitude winners. I think they've got a couple of presenters for us this evening.
Good evening, on behalf of the West Bridgewater CPAC, we are honored to share one of our most meaningful traditions, the presentation of our annual Grant of gratitude. Each year, we invite parents and caregivers to nominate a teacher, therapist, staff member, or administrator who has made a significant impact through inclusive practices in the classroom, pool, or district. These nominations are received by the CPAC board and one recipient is typically selected to receive a $500 grant. This award can be used to enhance their classroom, support their students with new learning materials, or pursue professional development opportunities. This year, the nominations we received were heartfelt and inspiring, so much so that we felt it was only right to award two $500 grants. We're proud to present this year's Grant of gratitude to Mrs. Gillis and Mr. Carlino.
And just a little something about each of them. Mrs. Gillis, a beloved kindergarten teacher, was described as creating a safe and loving classroom where each child feels valued and excited to learn. Parents spoke of her ability to help their children grow academically, socially, and emotionally. One parent shared that her daughter found both challenge and encouragement in Mrs. Gillis's class, discovering her potential as a leader. Another said their son has grown by leaps and bounds thanks to the nurturing and inclusive environment she creates each day. Her patience, creativity, and joy for teaching shine through in all that she does. When asked to describe her in just three words, families said she is patient, nurturing, and kind. And with Mr. Carlino, he is a dedicated special education teacher. He was recognized for the deep connections he forms with his students and their families. He provides not only academic support, but also emotional and social guidance. One parent credited him with helping their child with autism thrive at a college networking event, an incredible milestone. Another shared how he went out of his way to engage a student feeling left out at a football game and to celebrate another with a heartfelt video for Wildcat Pride Award. His compassion, integrity, and belief in every student makes a lasting impact. Again, when asked to describe him in three words, the nominators said he is committed, compassionate, and empowering. Please join us in celebrating Mrs. Gillis and Mr. Carlino and in thanking them for the lasting difference they are making in the lives of their students.
I would like to thank you both for all of your, everything that you've done for the students of West Bridgewater, being on the CPAC board. I do want to add that both of you have come up as nominees more than one year. So that was a big part of our discussion in identifying you both as worthy recipients, so thank you.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And again, congratulations to both of you and thank you for all you do for the students of West Bridgewater.
Thank you.
And next, we have some National History Day recognition. Mr. Despierre and Mrs. Page.
Thank you, yes. So these gentlemen, we're missing one, but will not be new to you as we were able to recognize them on the regional level. They did a great job and I asked Mr. D., you know, he worked really hard with these students, so I asked him if he wanted to come and do the honors of recognizing these boys here this evening. So, Mr. Despierre, the eighth grade civics and social studies teacher. Seventh grade.
Seventh grade.
He was eighth grade.
We shall explain, we shall explain. Good evening, it is a pleasure to be here with you tonight. My name is Mr. Despierre and I'm the grade seven social studies teacher here at the middle senior high school. I'm here tonight to recognize three eighth graders for a job well done on this year's National History Day project. NHD is project-based learning that is supported and sponsored by the Massachusetts Historical Society. There's a local competition here at the middle senior high school, regional competition at Foxborough High School, a state competition at Winchester High School, and finally, a national competition held on the University of Maryland campus. The students that are here tonight did an amazing job on their project this academic year. In my past 19 years in the school district, myself along with the history department have sent two other groups of students to represent West Bridgewater and the state of Massachusetts to the University of Maryland for the national competition of National History Day. Christopher, Aaron, and Tristan are the third group to make this trip. What was most impressive and telling to me was the boys came to me wanting to complete this project. NHD is required for seventh graders, but eighth graders have their own civics project. Undeterred, the boys assured me and their eighth grade teacher, Ms. Martin, that they would be able to handle the workload. All of the credit for this achievement lies with Christopher, Aaron, and Tristan. I helped them narrow down their topic choices and then they were off to the races. They spent hours on top of hours researching their topic, writing their script, and editing their script. And just think about that for a second, how many seventh and eighth graders get a chance to edit a script? So, pretty, I never had that option. So, pretty impressive that you're learning these career skills, if you will, at the age of 12 and 13. Last year and this year as well, the boys would be after school in the TV studio beyond 3:00 PM working on and editing their scripts. I'd also like to do a big shout out to Mr. Mail and Mr. Cray who thoroughly enjoyed working with the boys on their project and openly offered out their classroom materials and equipment for them to use. We wish these three young men nothing but success as they make their journey to the national competition. Also, a special thank you to the Howard trustees for helping to defray the costs of this trip. The trustees have consistently stepped up each and every time we have reached out for them for help in this area. So we have some certificates for the boys tonight to honor their achievement. We wish them nothing but the best as they represent our school and state at the national level in this competition. And I'm just excited to see in high school what these boys decide to study and really what they've become. The three of them truly are at the top of their class academically and always have consistently gone above and beyond, so we're all proud of you guys, we really are.
All right, so first up, Christopher Jones. Congratulations.
We'll do two for one here, is that where? So we have Tristan Hamley and his brother Aaron who could not be here tonight. Thank you very much.
I do have one question before you sit down.
Sure, go ahead.
So you said this is the third group that you've seen move on to the national.
Correct, correct, yes.
How many groups have you seen say, "I want to do it again" after doing it in seven?
Good question. So this year, I had two groups come to me, they were one of two. One group decided that they really just wanted to focus on the civics project, so like I said, how many seventh graders, eighth graders ask for more work, right?
Yeah, but that's why it's flummoxed.
It's a testament to them and in my opinion, where they're going in life, so the work ethic is second to none. All right?
Absolutely, yes, congratulations. So do you have one more recognition?
So we would like to recognize and thank Dave Schmier for all your years of service on the West Bridgewater School Committee. We know it takes a lot of time and effort in giving up your Monday nights, but it's well beyond Monday nights, there's a lot that goes on. You are a very successful member of several different committees and spend extra time working for, on behalf of the school committee, so thank you for all your years of service. We're certainly going to miss you.
Absolutely, so we have a little gift for you. I selected the bonsai tree, a little tiny tree, because it symbolizes patience and dedication. And that is something that really kind of rings true for you. I know, Dave, meeting you right from the first year, you had used an analogy from, I think, Tai Chi, about going with the breeze and just being patient. And so that is the characteristic that I really attribute to you and I thank you so much for all of the work that you've done. Okay, so that brings us back up to subcommittee appointments. So we do have a little bit of adjustments that were made here. So I think the first thing that we need to do is just discuss the adjustments and vote to make these adjustments official. The positions are the capital budget facilities, which is two, school committee members, that is the same. Personnel negotiations, which is two. Safe schools representative, which is one plus an alternate, and that was a change that was made last year, so there's no adjustments needed there. Donations and dedications is one. Sick bank rep is one. Warrant budget is two. Policy review is two. Wellness committee representative is one plus an alternate. And then the two changes, so we have student outreach coordinator, which is one plus an alternate. This was previously the student advisory committee, but Kara and I had done a little bit of research. Kara served this last year on the student advisory committee and did you want to talk about why the change?
Yeah, so multiple people, including Mrs. Ellis, combined all the knowledge we've learned over the past year about how we should be running things with the student advisory committee and instead of having two of us, we previously had two people from the school committee meeting with their five-person group every other month. We found out it's supposed to be all five of us meeting with their five-person committee every other month. And then we can designate one of us as the student outreach coordinator to keep in touch with them, make sure they don't need assistance with anything, make sure that they're meeting as needed, et cetera. So instead of it being the student advisory subcommittee, we're just now going to have like a liaison to their committee and then we'll figure out the meeting schedule.
And then the other addition is the school building committee representative. We had voted in the past and it was me, I was the alternate actually. So we do need to vote to have a new primary and a new alternate today. So I'm going to make a motion to add these positions to our list of subcommittee appointments, so that would be student outreach coordinator, primary and alternate, as well as the school building committee representative, primary and alternate. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion or questions? No? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved, okay, so that brings us back to the top. So I was able to touch base with each member this week just to kind of feel out interest in the different subcommittees and so I'm going to kind of summarize that here and then give you an idea of what we still need to fill and then we can have a discussion and kind of figure it out from there. So in speaking with, well, I'll represent myself first. The only subcommittee that I really feel passionate about remaining on is policy. And I think for those of you who have been on the committee, you know, we've put a lot of work into getting this policy index up and running, so I kind of feel like it's my third child at this point. So I do continue to have interest in the budget, capital budget, and the school building committee as well, but I am pretty flexible. Christine, you had expressed that you are also interested in policy and that you wanted to remain on donations, but that you'd also be a little bit flexible, you're willing to continue as the student alternate, the student advisory alternate, and there's potential there for alternate for safe schools as well?
Yes.
Okay, and then Kara, you had said budget, student advisory liaison. And currently Kara is our alternate, or actually our primary on personnel, so that is, we do need to come up with a second personnel representative, but we'll discuss that in a minute. JP, you had said that you were interested in budget and capital budget as well as policy, but also a little bit flexible and willing to take on some other roles and potentially the school building committee alternate or primary, depending?
Sure.
Okay. And Perry, you had said that you were super flexible, which I love, but that you did have some interest in safe schools. Were there any other committees that you were potentially interested in or?
Anything with numbers, is good.
Anything with numbers, okay. So where we do have openings is the primary is, or I would say the biggest opening would be the personnel, the second person on personnel. I am not eligible, I would say eligible, to be on personnel by the guidance of our attorney because I am a teacher technically and I am part of the MTA. So I'm not a member of the West Bridgewater Education Association, but it would be potentially a conflict of interest for me to serve on that committee. It would also be a contract conflict of interest for JP as well. So that leaves Christine and Perry for either of you who are interested in the personnel subcommittee. So we do have the descriptions of the committees in the folder, but this is primary, the primary duties are to be part of collective bargaining for not just the teachers, but the maintenance staff as well and the secretaries. And there is a certain element of managing contracts, keeping Mr. Bobwell's contract in line and just kind of overseeing some of the administration contracts as well.
I'm comfortable doing it unless you think it's not numbers.
Oh, that's right, numbers, okay. Okay, good. So then the other ones are wellness, primary and alternate. We didn't have a lot of interest in wellness. Kara, you served on wellness this last year.
I did and we struggled to get time to meet with each other, so.
Okay, so but I believe, it's quarterly, it's supposed to be quarterly, right?
I think it's supposed to be quarterly.
Yeah, and it would happen during the school term?
Usually it has in the past, yes.
Okay, I know.
I can certainly try again if no one else is interested, but.
Do we have any? Yeah, you got a couple of big ones on there. Is there any interest in the wellness, anybody? So what this consists of, or actually, I've never been to a wellness meeting, so I don't know if you can speak to what.
Sure, I mean, we're talking about issues related to student health. Food services has been a big part of it, it's actually kind of co-coordinated within the schools with Anne Marie Brinder, our food service director, and Julie Dietrichson, our lead nurse. So they kind of combine together their talents and their expertise to form our wellness committee on the side of the schools.
And it's quarterly?
Usually, that's our goal, yes.
It's like, how long are the meetings?
About an hour.
Okay, sure. All right, great.
I'd be an alternate.
You'll be an alternate on that? All right. All right, so then we would also need a school building committee alternate. I know JP, you said you potentially be interested in being the alternate. Is that something you're still?
Sure.
Okay. All right, and then we need sick bank representative. I don't mind taking that one, that's not a, that's not a big deal. And a safe schools alternate as well. Christine, you said you're okay with the alternate? Okay. Okay, so where that lands us is, so for capital budget and facility based on interest would be myself and JP. I know potentially Perry as well. Personnel negotiations would be Kara and Perry. Safe schools representative would be Perry with Christine as the alternate. Christine for donations and dedications. Myself for sick bank. It's a lot of interest in budget, I'm willing to give up my seat on budget, I've done it for three years and, you know, as a committee, we're still all very involved in the budget, of course. It's one of our primary responsibilities, so I'm happy to pass the baton to JP if you'd like to.
Perfect, I love that.
Then policy would be myself and Christine. And then, so wellness would be Christine with Perry as an alternate. Student outreach is Kara with Christine as an alternate. And then the school building rep would be myself with JP as an alternate. All right. So just to summarize, Perry, that would have you, I think, on three or two plus an alternate? So it is pretty even, it's two to three, sometimes four, including the alternate. So now we just need to go through and make it official. So I'd like to make a motion to elect myself and JP and the capital budget and facilities subcommittee. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so moved. I'd like to make a motion to elect Kara and Perry on the personnel negotiations subcommittee. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so moved. I'd like to make a motion to elect Perry as the safe schools representative with Christine as the alternate. Is there a second? Discussion on that? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. I'd like to make a motion to elect Christine as the donations and dedications representative.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. I'd like to make a motion to elect myself as the sick bank representative. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Kara and JP for the warrant budget subcommittee. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on that? So it is one thing that I did want to bring up, so we do have to be really mindful and JP and I talked about this and he's willing to just be super, super careful in making sure that anything associated with any family member, his wife, is, he recuses himself from because ethically, that's a conflict of interest. But I'm excited to have you on the budget subcommittee because you have a lot of experience with budgets, you're on the finance committee, and I think that the value there really outweighs, and you're willing to put in the legwork to make sure that you're checking all the boxes. We'll figure it out, so. Any other discussion on that? Nope, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. I'd like to make a motion to elect myself and Christine on the policy review subcommittee. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So moved. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Christine as the wellness committee representative with Perry as the alternate. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. I'd like to make a motion to elect Kara as our student outreach coordinator with Christine as the alternate. Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, discussion? Discussion on that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. And then our last one, I'd like to make a motion to elect myself as the primary school building committee representative with JP as the alternate. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so moved. We thought we were done, don't turn the page just yet. So it has also come to my attention that we need to elect chairs of each subcommittee. So anything that has two members, so that would be capital budget facilities, personnel negotiations, warrant budget, and policy review. So starting with capital budget and facilities. I'm happy to be the chair, so that's JP and I, so I'm happy to be the chair of that unless you'd like to take it on?
Don't let her know.
All right, I would like to make a motion to elect myself as the chair of the capital budget facility. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved. Personnel negotiations, so I think it would make sense to have Kara as the chair of this just because you do have some experience with that. So I'd like to make a motion to elect Kara as the chair of the personnel subcommittee. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. All right, warrant and budget, so we need a chair of warrant and budget, so that would be Kara and JP. Okay, all right, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Kara as the warrant budget subcommittee chair. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. And last one, policy review. I would like to make a motion to nominate myself as the chair of the policy subcommittee. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. All right. Moving on to approval of minutes. Move to approve the minutes from our March 3rd and March 10th, 2025 school committee meetings. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion on the minutes?
My only question would be, since Perry and I were on the board, I'm assuming you're not holding your vote, right?
You can recuse yourself here.
Okay.
If you're not comfortable, go for it.
Okay, yeah, so I'll recuse myself.
Okay, all right, great. All in favor? Aye. And with two recused, any opposed? All right, so move three to zero. All right, the warrants report, I've already passed the baton to Mrs. Lozardi.
The following warrants were issued and paid for the fiscal year 2025. Bill warrants, FY '25, April 3rd, 2025, forty-five thousand, eight hundred twenty-five dollars and ninety-one cents. April 10th, 2025, one hundred seventy-three thousand, seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents. April 17th, 2025, five hundred thousand, four hundred forty dollars and two cents. April 24th, 2025, one hundred six thousand, eight hundred eighty-six and ten cents. And then for the payroll warrants, fiscal year '25, April 11th, 2025, six hundred eight thousand, six hundred sixty dollars and four cents. April 25th, 2025, six hundred ten thousand, nine hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty-eight cents. As always, all warrants are public record and once signed are available in the selectmen's office for review.
Thank you, Kara. I'd like to introduce our student advisory committee representative, Mackenzie Craig. Good evening, Ms. Craig, thank you for joining us. All right, that brings us to public comment. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members shall limit comments to three minutes and are reminded that public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. Personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public comment. Okay, seeing none, we're moving on to the superintendent's update.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Bodwell.
Just first one is to put out there that we have our academic technology and finite showcase Thursday night, 5:30 to 6:30. We condensed it down to an hour because we have a lot of young kids that come, so when we went an hour and a half, it got kind of long for some of the kids. There's no formal presentation, so people are free to walk around. It's only here in the middle senior high school in the cafeteria, but we'll also have some exhibits and presentations at the top of the Google stairs and then down by the art wing. So we will have people directing, we'll have announcements made. But it really is a wonderful night for people to come and see all the great things that are going on in our district from grades pre-K to 12. So we hope people can join us that evening. Update on school choice. So currently, we are accepting students into grades eight through 12. We are holding off on the other grades at this time due to our current enrollments. We've sent out acceptance letters and we received 21 confirmations back in those grade levels, with a majority of them being in grade nine, which is very typical for us because we lose students to Southeastern and to the agricultural schools. We have sent out a second round of acceptance letters. The reason they didn't go out initially is they were still missing information. So we need to make sure we have a more complete packet, mostly just to make sure they're in the proper grade before we send out an acceptance letter. We have officially closed kindergarten grade one and grade five due to the four sections in kindergarten grade one for next year. And grade five has 127 students currently. We are looking at the other elementary grades, they're to be determined at this time. We're reviewing enrollments. If they do open, it would be most likely to our siblings first and then possibly us, but we tend to get a lot of siblings at different grade levels. So we're not sure yet. Again, the thought is we are looking at not only this year, but the years until hopefully inevitably, hopefully a new building. But we know that we are seeing a growth rate that is a little bit higher than the past. We have other developments in town that haven't fully been occupied. And we have the apartment complex that hasn't been open yet, I do not think. So we may see a bump in enrollment. Our goal is to replace our students who have graduated, which is 30 seniors. We also will lose a few kids possibly to some vocational schools that live in Bridgewater or Rainham or Brockton that are currently school choice. If we can get more, great, but we'll always do it with an eye to making sure we're not going to overcrowd classrooms. We foretold that and sometimes to the detriment of our own budget, which happened this past year. So we'll continue to look. And I hate it, I had to email a parent back today asking about an elementary grade. And I continue to apologize, I said, I'm really sorry. We haven't made any decisions at that, those grade levels. I know people like to know, but we're going to proceed cautiously until we have more information. Building project update.
Sorry, can I ask a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
So I guess all of my questions retain to the first three goals. Do we know how many spots we have open in eighth through 12, or is that still undetermined?
It is, we have less applicants at grades 10, 11, and 12. So we've accepted students who have applied in those grade levels. So there are technically more openings, we just haven't had the applicants. We will have about 20 openings in grade nine. That's also dependent on the number of students who accept to go to the vocational and to the agricultural schools. And grade eight has about six to seven openings. Just because that grade is a little bit smaller than the current sixth grade, so we're not accepting into next year's seventh grade. So we do have limited spots. If we have more interest than we do slots, then we will do a lottery, we will pull names out of a hat.
Okay, and then the second one, the 21 confirmed, are those all eighth through 12?
Correct.
Okay, and then do we know how many second round acceptance letters we're sending out?
We sent out about 20.
So another 20-ish.
Yeah, knowing that, kind of like the college applications, we know not everyone, circumstances change, people decide not to, they decide to stay in their own district. So we do end up sending out more than we probably can take, but we have never gotten 100% back.
I have one now.
Sure.
So the goal is there are new school choices, right?
Correct.
To replace those graduating or new.
Correct.
What is that, what's our goal for the town, total?
Total.
School choice, like what's?
230. Yep, good question. That's what we budgeted for, so that's the goal, to reach that. If we can exceed it, great, but we know again, circumstance could change throughout the year with people just going back to their school.
Sorry, one more.
Okay, no, no problem.
The 21 accepted are all new, correct?
Correct.
All right, so realistically, we only needed nine more to hit our goal?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Do you have any agricultural school, are kids still applying?
They are still, well, they're not still applying, but they are still, their admissions are rolling and students have been accepted or waitlisted, they haven't been denied at this point.
What's their drop date?
That is, Mrs. Page, you know the drop dates, they have to let, I know Southeastern has a drop date where they have to let them know.
I don't want to say the long date.
Okay, I can check on that and get back to you, just so I don't put misinformation out. But I know some are waiting to hear from the other schools if they're waitlisted. Some have said they, you know, maybe go into or staying in West Bridgewater, but they're waitlisted at, say, Bristol Aggie. So there's still a lot of potential for movement. The guidance partners have done a really good job of updating a Google sheet that we have, that we can look at it. So the numbers are looking good, but we just don't know definitively yet. But I will absolutely have a better report in June. Any more choice questions? Good call, good questions, appreciate it. For the building project update, so we did hold our second community forum here at the middle senior high school on April 1st. Fairly well attended, there's also live streaming tape, so people have an opportunity to hopefully watch it. I thought they can see the video, which is located on the cable station as well as on our website. At our school building committee meeting on April 8th, we did vote to approve a K to six new construction at the Rozell McDonald's site. So a lot of discussion went into it, we did look back at the Howard site. It was a fairly long meeting, but it was a lot of good information that was shared. I did also share this information out in the last district newsletter. With a K to six new construction at Rozell, that would leave preschool and our central office remaining either at Spring Street or potentially at the Howard School. What we're going to be doing with our school building committee over the next few meetings is looking at costs associated with both buildings. I think that's important to show what it would be. If preschool were to stay at Spring Street, they would be going down into the kindergarten wing. There's just little that has to be done in terms of that. There are five classrooms down there. Currently, we only have three preschool classrooms, looking to expand in the future. One of the things that we are looking to do over the next few years will be replacing the rugs with tile, because I think that's something that needs to be done anyhow. But structurally, there's really not a lot that needs to be done. The other wing where preschool is currently could give the central office room to spread out a little bit. Currently, we have four or five people in our business office and it's quite crowded in there. So there's also the potential, look at the Howard School as a site for pre-K and central office. Obviously, a lot bigger of a space. There would need to be some renovations in terms of bathrooms at Howard School. We'd have to look at what the cost would be, what that cost could trigger in terms of a renovation and getting the entire building up to code. So that's stuff that the architects and our OPM will be looking at. We did submit the preferred schematic report to the MSBA on May 1st. In total, it's a 984-page document in our massive folders. Included in that was the educational programming. We had to redo that, thank you to our administrative staff for their hard work because we had to really fine tune it for the K to six option. And our next school building committee meeting will be next Tuesday.
Question mark?
Yes.
And I can't remember what I asked you when we last discussed this. In terms of the pre-K being separate from kindergarten?
Yes.
I mean, obviously, there's time to make a plan, but would that be difficult where they share so many services to be so far apart from like the OT, PT, speech?
We would definitely need space for them. We would definitely need them to travel, they probably wouldn't stay there the entire day.
Unfortunately, they'll still have traveling employees.
It is, it is. It would limit to, you know, from four to three buildings, depending on the needs. Some may be full-time in that position, but again, we'll have to figure that out. We hope, we all think it's going to be added positions. And the only added positions right now would be additional classroom teachers that we're adding, which we have to do anyhow. But you're right, it does create that opportunity for having to have, you know, people traveling between buildings.
That, and then just the reason for not having the option of fifth and sixth staying at Howard and bringing four into pre-K for four, what's the reason?
Good question, so I think one of the main reasons was the K to six got the most students into a new building. Five and six, it wouldn't be the greatest grade configuration, I think. You'd have a good, you'd transition for two grades, two years, and then you'd go up two years to the middle senior high school. But this gets more students into a new building. And it also, I think, provides more flexibility for the town in terms of potentially using Spring Street or Howard. And if one of the buildings isn't used, potential space that could, one of the buildings could be taken down. Fields, parking, gives more options.
That's the K through six one that was approved that's without the wastewater facility?
Correct. So that.
That's why pre-K wasn't included, I assume.
Correct. The number of occupants would be below the threshold for a wastewater treatment plan, which is, you know, costs more money and space was also a concern on that. Budget update, not really much to update, but we have some very important meeting, the town meeting on next Monday night at 12. The school committee budget will be presented as go to capital budget items. Middle, senior, high school cameras and security will be, upgrades will be added. It's, although, you know, I was just talking to some students today, we were talking about, you know, the new school. And 10 years in, it's, you know, we still think of it as a new school, but the technology is outdated. And I know the middle senior high school administration can tell you that the cameras, although they're over 10 years in the building, that the technology is even older than that, they have cameras that are not working. They have some of the security systems are not where they should be. This is something that has gone through our state schools committee and has been a constant point of discussion. It's fully supported by our SRO and the West Bridgewater Police Department in terms of getting a system that will be fully integrated into our other systems that we got through a grant at about, I think the cost of about $98,000 to get the elementary schools. This is going to be a little bit more than that, there'll be more cameras and more upgrades. So I think it's really money well spent for the, you know, safety and security of all here at the middle senior high school. And the other, our Chromebooks for incoming seventh graders and any new students. We had received a lot of money through SRO we used for Chromebooks. We're looking to add them into the capital item. We, with these Chromebooks, we're really getting their full tenure here at the middle senior high school out of them. Yes, some may fail or need repairs, but the ones we're getting are lasting five and six years, which is better than the first generation when we first started. We actually have a system that we're replacing them every three years, but we're hoping to get a longer life out of them.
Can I ask a couple of questions? Wouldn't you need Chromebooks every year for seventh graders, or shouldn't it be?
That's, so we're looking, we may end up putting it back into the budget. We're looking to do a one-year, you know, take this out of capital. But it is, to our belief, it's kind of a consumable item, that they do last a number of years. But it could be something we put back in capital each year, or we may look to see if we can fund it through our regular budget.
Okay, thank you.
Next, I'd like to, Mrs. Page and Mr. Hannah, to talk about an internship proposal. That would be something that if approved, would eventually go into our program of studies.
Correct. So Mr. Hannah has been talking with me probably like the last year and a half or so. We have students that don't traditionally love a comprehensive high school and, you know, struggle with wanting more of a CTE type of program. So I invited, asked Mr. Hannah, along with one of our finest, Jake Whitmore, to come and speak with you about some opportunities that we're hoping we can give to current juniors going into their senior year who are in good standing, an opportunity to get a CTE pathway program in their senior year. So without further ado, Mr. Hannah, thank you.
Good evening, school committee members. Mr. Bodwell, thank you for the opportunity. I have a significant background in CTE and without having the opportunity to have chapter 74 programming here, which is career and technical education versus academic structure. And looking at our current internship that we have for seniors, it just dawned on me and started talking with Mrs. Page that rather than running it as what you may have heard as a cooperative education, paid, full day every other day or all week long, like they do at the regional vocational school, I presented the idea of what we call a paid internship. And basically what it is, is we would supplement two periods out of the course of a senior's schedule for them to find work and to then be paid at the same time receiving academic credit. The goal is, is to identify in our first year, five, approximately five to 10 seniors who fit this mold and who have a passion to pursue career and technical education, or a vocational trade, I should say, right after high school. I sent to Mr. Bodwell a summary of the proposal, ideally what those benefits were. And then I also, on the backside of that, how it would be implemented and monitored. In addition, I sent Mr. Bodwell a draft of what the cooperative education manual would look like as entitled Paid Internship. It does include site visits, it also includes assessment from the employers, and it also includes our students to be paid, again, be paid while they're out for the two periods and beyond the end of the school day, they would be able to stay on and work. If you're familiar with the high school schedule, our seniors are able to leave during what we call our homeroom time, which is around 10:30 in the morning, and be gone the rest of the day as it backs into the last two periods of the day, which begin at 11 o'clock. They would be able to leave after that homeroom period or after their lunch and take those two periods and go to their place of work. Our goal is to provide a change in the current program of studies with school committee approval in order to provide an opportunity for a few of our seniors who we have already identified as looking to pursue vocational trade right after high school. I asked Jake to come with me today because Jake is a student that I've been talking to about this at length. to about this at length, and I thought it'd be nice for you to hear why this would be important for a student pursuing, say, plumbing or HVAC or the construction trades. And so, I asked Jake to just share a little bit about what he thought.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jake Whitmore, and as someone who's interested in going into the trades after high school and has landed a job with Constellate Plumbing Corporation, I believe that this, the paid internship would be very beneficial to me because it could give me my work hours towards my license, and I believe that is worth like its weight in gold. I think that this would be a great opportunity for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Jake brings up a good point, it's his hours. So, that's a jumpstart on his career. So, as, as a Southeastern student would go out and co-op, they receive their hours in the shop. They receive those hours towards master licensure, journeyman, excuse me, journeyman licensure through the State Board of Massachusetts in any variety of trades in the classroom. If you don't have that, you have to get that authentically real-world experience out on the job with a master plumber who Jake has already employed with. So, that's a good example. There's a lot of criteria to meet, to meet in order to be able to attain this. Jake is an example of somebody that's in good academic standing, pays to graduate. And what does this really change? Instead of having a one-period internship like most of our seniors currently do, Jake would have two, and that would replace some half-year or full-year electives that he would not take because he would be out pursuing his passion. So, if I could answer any questions, I'd love to do so at this time.
I have a question. Thank you, Mr. Hannah, for all this information, all the work you've done behind the scenes. Jake, section, a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Would you see this as a motivating factor for yourself? If you knew this was something you could do, if you looked back a few years to, you know, eighth grade or your freshman year of high school, how would you see this as a motivator to, to do well?
I would see this as like the best opportunity possible, just because, you know, most kids when they get out of high school, they get this done, and by the time they're like 21, they get all their hours, they get their license, and then they're just trying to figure it out. I believe that in eighth grade, when I was younger, if I saw this opportunity, I believe I would just work as hard as I can just to get it, because who would want to wait till they're 21 to get their license when they could be 18?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Do you think, for either one of you, actually, do you think this would maybe retain some students from going to the vocational schools where it gets them an opportunity to see both sides?
Well, I mean, obviously, students are going to still apply to go to Southeastern or agricultural schools, but let's talk about the ones that don't get in, you know? And then, there's really no carrot at the end to, to that incentive, right? So, if we could provide an incentive for a student who did not get in, because it is very competitive, I don't know if you've seen the rating sheet for CTE, regional vocational schools, but I think the cutoff score is somewhere at like 18 out of 20 for the incoming freshman class. And I think if a student maybe struggled academically in grade seven or had poor attendance or they just maybe didn't apply themselves, maybe they were late getting the educational support that they needed, late getting on an IEP, that could affect whether or not they got into that Southeastern program, for example. So, yes, I think this would certainly be a motivator for our students who I would worry about falling through the cracks because they didn't attain that. The same token, I have a lot of conversation with the kids who say, this is a really difficult decision, I don't know if I want to leave West Bridgewater. So, then you're thinking to yourself, okay, what are the pros and cons? We just added another pro as to why we should stay at West Bridgewater if we could attain this by senior year. And that provides us with another opportunity to say, how can we keep our kids in-house?
We were asked a very good question by a member of the finance committee that said, you know, can you replicate what they do at, you know, Southeastern? And their answer, our answer was, no, we can't, we don't have the opportunities they have, but this would be a wonderful opportunity, I think, for our kids to, to get that real-world experience while staying here in, in the school.
And these internship sites, are they vetted?
Yes.
And like, and when the kids, at the end, is there a review process so they can have some good reviews, like it was great or it wasn't what I thought, so next year, those students don't go back to that site if it wasn't?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the draft proposal does include not only onsite visits regularly, but also constant communication with the employer and the student and check-ins. Vetted out, of course, this employer has to have insurance, offer workman's comp, be OSHA certified, our students have to be OSHA certified as well. And then, to answer your second part of your question, which would be, you know, was it worth it? So, panel review at the end by a group of educators here in the building to learn about Jake's experience at, at his plumbing internship.
Oh, go ahead. No, you can go ahead. So, just a question about who here at the school would be the staff member responding to you?
Yeah, so my, yeah, so my Chapter 74 licensure with the Department of Education allowed me to be that site manager in terms of just being able to facilitate.
By monitoring the tax cards and all of that. Okay, thank you.
So, how would this work? I know there's discussion of a schedule change and going from a block schedule to a rotating schedule. So, how would this work with a rotating schedule?
TBD.
Well, I think, I think what we would do in the rotating schedule, we still have morning and afternoon, so similar to what we do now, just in the block, we'd rotate maybe morning and rotate afternoon. You'll still have your drop, you know, because we're looking at either seven drop two or eight drop three. So, we'd have to manipulate just still with the morning and afternoon classes. You know, we'll have to look at that for sure, but I think this is a great opportunity for some of our kids. They, you know, they work out, it's going to be an incentive. You know, a lot of times freshman sophomore year, if they see, because they need to be in good standing, they need to do what they're supposed to do to be eligible for this opportunity. You know, but a lot of these kids, it's a great, you know, it's a great experience for them to get a head start, like Jake said. So, and Jake's the face of some of, you know, some of these students who just want, you know, not every student wants to go to college, and they want to get out and go into the workforce, so.
First, I just want to say, I think this is a great idea, so I don't want these questions to come off as negative, but I have two questions. One, do the parents need to approve their participation?
Yes.
And then, secondly, I guess this is more of a process question. So, like every year, do you plan on having like, here are the five positions we did last year that we worked with employers, so like kids can apply to them, or is it more like Jake already has this set up and then he comes to you?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, what ideally is, we would meet with students, first of all, in guidance and kind of determine what those, who those students are, and then ask them that question if that would be something that they would be interested in. Somebody like Jake is just a perfect example of both of those two worlds coming together at the same time. He's already pursued this position before we've even had this conversation. So, but yes, we would be able to encourage students that we know that would, this would certainly benefit them. And also, having these conversations like in the sophomore year, if you're not on track to be promoted to grade 10, I mean, to grade 11, this is not a conversation for you. So, therefore, you might want to get yourself in gear a little bit. So, that's a whole nother aspect of it. And, you know, as far as number of students, you know, we're just going to try to pilot this, see where the schedule brings us, but we are currently, next year, just going to remain on the same block schedule we currently are on.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is this something we're looking for next year? Program of studies has been approved, so we're looking for an addition to?
Correct.
Or a change to the program of studies?
Yeah, yeah. It would be an addendum to the program of studies instead, we're currently in the program of studies, and of course, selection sheet is senior internship, which is one period. We would be requesting, entitling it different, we'd call this career pathways internship, and this would be for 10 credits, and we would just be requesting the school committee's approval to make that addition to the existing.
Is, is the one-credit program sticking around as well, or is this?
Yeah, yeah. The one-credit program does help overall building class sizes.
We have the 1.25 for a school internship, and then 2.5 they are going to school. So, you're looking for a vote tonight? Is that where?
If possible.
Okay. No pressure or anything. I did not have the opportunity to look at the full internship manual yet, I didn't realize that we were going to be voting tonight.
No, that's okay.
So, yeah, but does that, how does that impact your scheduling? Is that okay if we wait till June?
Yeah, you can make it work.
Okay.
I think due to the number of, we're not talking a huge number of students, so we can still-
The goal is for students to leave with their schedule on June 13th, I believe, is last day, actually, the week before, so they can do schedule changes. But we can certainly manipulate schedules after that date, so it's fine.
Does everyone else feel okay about it?
So, be prepared to vote next month, is what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
I do have one actual thing that I noted, I did briefly look, that's like the first page of the internship manual, or the second page, and I did see on here, you know, passing the MCAS exams and the discipline established by the state is a state graduation requirement, and that's not accurate anymore.
Yeah, we took that out. So, that, that, the item that you have is, was a draft manual that the MCAS-
Oh, so we don't have the updated?
Yeah, yep, we do. That particular piece, though, needs to be taken out of that, that line right there.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and next up, information on my end of the year goals, just to kind of give you a bit of an overview. I did compile an evidence collection form, and it's 16-page document that I've added stuff to constantly over the past few days or week or so throughout the year. And included in that, I do have a brief reflection on the year. I did link my goals to it as well as the mid-cycle reflection and information that was shared halfway through the year. In the indicator slash goal tracking section, I submitted at least three pieces of evidence for each of the 21 indicators under the four different standards. I will say, I found it difficult sometimes to make sure I was putting them into what I felt was the best indicator. It's quite possible that some others could fall into different indicators as well, just kind of looking back and forth. I provided feedback and reflection on my goals and provided evidence that was accomplished during the year, so I took each of the goals and kind of summarized them and provided information and also checked them off in the indicators. I added 34 categories of evidence, which includes, I believe, roughly around 60 separate documents that are linked. Now, I hope, I've tried most of the links, Mrs. Ellis helped me out this afternoon. We do think all the links are working. If not, you can just send me a request and I will go back through them. What I did is I did create a shared folder where I put all of the evidence in there, so, and I shared that with all of you. So, you should have access, but if you don't, I will certainly remedy that quickly. And if more information is needed to, you know, for you to provide a rating, please just let me know. I don't want to leave any stone unturned.
I thought we talked about 20 evidence.
I know, sorry. I started, I just started and I couldn't stop. I really, I felt, I know, I was going, so.
Okay.
Yeah. So, just to briefly go through the goals, I want to provide some information here, because again, a lot of the evidence for the indicators is included in the document that you have, but the first goal had to do with the school building project and some areas of note, not fully inclusive, but attending, you know, we have two meetings per month for the school building committee. We also have status update meetings with HMFH, PMA, and Gary Keith also joins me for these meetings, so we meet behind the scenes. We have worked with our staff through the educational program submission to the MSBA. We've actually now submitted it twice. Again, huge thank you to our administrators for all their hard work putting that together. Went from, I think, 100 pages to 103 pages.
91 to 103.
91 to 103, thank you. We have worked out, I was a submit the preliminary design program, which was done in December, participation in the two community forums as well as planning meetings, responding to all relevant emails, meetings, requests for information, including the submission of the preferred schematic report, which was on May 1st, which I referenced earlier, the 984-page document. And then, our goal is to provide as much information out to the public as possible through newsletters, coffee hours, the school committee meeting updates, website, and social media posts. I think what we want is when this finally does go to town meeting vote, however the community votes, at least they're informed and they have all the information and there are no surprises. We know that it'll be an expensive project, we know it's going to be for, right now, a design enrollment, 1,075 students, K to 6. It's a big building, it's a big project, but we want to make sure people have all the information they need. Therefore, if people have questions or concerns, reach out. If I don't have the information, I'll reach out to those who may have it, so we can get information to the people. And our building community meetings are open to the public, they are taped and they are aired, so hopefully that can be good information as well. So, that was the first goal. The second goal has to do with, really, this is more my working with the administrators. And again, one of my main goals is educational leadership, to make sure I'm working with our administrators, so they're doing the best they can with their staff. So, throughout the year, conducting formal and informal walkthroughs in all buildings with the administrators. Part of my goal has been to be in the buildings as often as possible, and I've worked hard at collecting data this year that I did share in the, as part of my evidence. We did use a Google form to conduct targeted walkthroughs and, you know, recorded information. I will say that although we did some of them, it is an area that I want to enhance and improve upon next year, just I felt that there's, we, we ended up kind of getting into classrooms and naturally just walking the building and talking rather than going through the process. So, it's an area that I know I can improve on for next year. We did some team walkthroughs in different buildings. Usually, we did those during our admin team meetings, which is monthly on the Monday of school committee meetings. I think it was great to get administrators into buildings that they're not normally into and seeing what's going on in the classrooms. We, again, hold monthly admin meetings, and we have ongoing review of district priorities, whether it's PBIS, SEL, RMK, Witten Wisdom, Wildcat Pride. We, we talk about these things every month. This year, we also talked about our integrated monitoring review through DESI. We kept those as constant agenda items to discuss. I have a meeting regularly with central office staff. It's, you know, we don't have scheduled meetings per se with central office, but we're talking every single day, as well as our food service director of technology and our building and grounds director. I do have scheduled meetings done every other week, but often it's more than that as well. We've this year formed a professional development team with members from the WBEA representing all four buildings. We've held two professional development meetings here in the middle, senior high school learning commons. Mrs. Giannis has been an integral part of that, and we've had some really good meetings, sharing information so we can prepare professional development for next year. And visibility in schools and a school-related event, it's my goal to be as visible as possible because I want to, because I feel it's important for me to see what's going on, whether it's walking in, just talking with administrator in the office, or being in lunch duty, or walking into classrooms. I want to do that as frequently as possible. Goal three had to do with looking at areas of strength and areas for growth within the district by establishing a two-way communication through multiple sources. So, especially at the beginning of the year, there may have been a little bit of survey overload, but I think we're going to try to fine tune those in the future and combine them. But through our climate and culture survey, executive summary, we got, you know, three areas of strength, and when I determined those, it was through the parent and family surveys, staff surveys, and then the students in grade seven to 12. And you'll see consistency, I think, in a lot of them, but I think gathering that data was important, sharing that out with the community, putting it in the newsletters, sharing with the administrators and the staff, because we value everyone's opinion and thoughts. And we also got areas of growth and improvement. And I think whatever we're doing, we're trying to find what we do well, but it's also equally, if not more important, to find out what areas we can improve upon. So, again, you'll see some consistency in the three different surveys that we gathered. And if you go to the surveys, you can find much more detailed information. And some areas of note that go along with this, the climate and culture survey, the monthly Wildcat Pride district newsletters, which the views are between maybe 600 to 900 sometimes. We hit over 1,000. We hit over a thousand, but it's, I just want to make sure people get to see what's going on, because there's a lot of great things going on in the buildings, and I appreciate everyone's hard work. The superintendent residence programs. I have been in all four schools for days, some schools I've gotten to multiple times. I really enjoy it, and in all honesty, I am exhausted after I'm done that day. I love it because as a former elementary and secondary principal, it takes me back to being in a building all day with the kids. And again, I appreciate the hard work of everyone. Monthly coffee hours, we have had a virtual option. Not too many participated virtually, but we did have the option for some, and we did do some evening ones as well. We completed the DESI integrated monitoring review for special education and civil rights information was shared at the last meeting. We've always had a superintendent's council, which has been our high school students. This year, mid-year, we started roundtable groups for middle school students, Howard School students, and Roselle students. And I was in at the Roselle last week, and as they walked in, one of my second graders, I think, goes, "Here we are for the round table with the rectangular table." And he laughed at that. "The next time I have to bring good doughnuts," they told me. But it's awesome, hearing student voice, hearing, gathering information from them. I did share some evidence about stuff. I've asked, the first time I met with them, I asked them for, I gave them all sticky notes. I said, "Write down everything you think is going well, things that you like." And then I collected them, we talked about them, and I gave them sticky notes and said, "What do you think can improve? How can we get better?" And it's interesting, they felt a lot of things were going well, they had a hard time sometimes thinking about things, but I wanted to get them thinking and I shared all that information back with them. I'm looking to do that next year, if not monthly, every six weeks or so. We conducted bullying surveys, information and action plans were shared at the school committee meeting, and we have an end-of-the-year survey that the administrators will put out in their June newsletter. We did it a few years ago, I think twenty twenty-one, maybe twenty twenty-two was the last time we did an end-of-the-year survey. Give people the opportunity, again, to report on what went well and what maybe can be areas for improvement. Sometimes I think people don't like to say things mid-year, so this gives them an opportunity at the end of the year. As administrators, we'll collect the data, we'll talk about it during the summer at our summer meetings. And the fourth goal had to do really more with creating a culture of belonging in our schools and creating a couple, looking, finding identifiable areas of strength and growth. So you'll see, again, some similarity to the other ones, but again, with an eye on a culture of belonging. And some areas of note for the fourth goal, we supported a culture response of professional development sessions for elementary staff. Sat in on some of those sessions, really well done, really providing great information for educators. Monthly check-ins with administrators through our admin meetings, Wildcat Pride, PBIS, SEL teams in each of the schools. Some highlights, our Howard Pride assemblies, there's links to those presentations, and there's a link to the video for one of the Middle Senior High School Pride breakfast programs. When I met today, I said, "I really love how we're all speaking the same language. It seems like we have a common, you know, core values that we're talking about, although it's different in each of the schools, and it's important to talk about it." Regular check-ins on our RMK program, K to six, which we're excited to pursue again for next year. We added the bullying harassment conflict forum to the website newsletters. We have had a few people fill it out, giving our administrators an opportunity to fully investigate. And celebrating the growth and enhancement of our unified sports teams. We got the recognition banner for our students, and we had a wonderful game. So in general, this job isn't done alone. It's done with the support and help of our administrative team, school committee, educators in the district, and the entire community. Everyone works together, and I'm, you know, I've got a great team surrounding myself and working hard, so I really appreciate it. And like I said, I've put a lot of the different evidence there for you to review that hopefully give you more information.
Just a question about this process, is it, are these goals that we create in coordination with you, like before they start each quarter?
It'll be the goals I present and are approved by the school committee.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, looking at dates. So Mr. Babel has provided his sixty pieces of evidence.
Sorry.
So we need to, the timeline is, we need to have this evaluation done, ready to review, ready to vote on for June second, which is our next meeting. If individuals can have their individual evaluations to me by May nineteenth, so that will be two weeks from today, I will then put them all together and create a summary, and I will get it back to you by the end of that week, Friday, the twenty-fourth, so that you can all review the summary, and then we can give it to Mr. Babel on the twenty-sixth, which will then give him a week to review it if he has any questions before we go over the entire thing next month. So I will put templates in the drive for new members. This is, I think I said to both of you, probably gonna be your most difficult task. MASC states that in order to provide a rating on the superintendent, it needs to be based on your experience with him as a superintendent and not as, I'm sorry, as your experience as a school committee member and not as a parent. So it is difficult, not having been part of the committee for a whole year, but I'm here to help you with the process. You can.
I mean, honestly, I feel like, I feel like we should recuse ourselves from this then, because it doesn't seem like something that I could accurately.
You just took the words from, from my mouth.
Just wanted to make sure.
You can.
That wasn't a mouth.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you can, and I did my first year, recuse myself from giving ratings. You can certainly provide feedback in the narratives based on the evidence that you look at. That is definitely helpful. Mr. Babel, if you opted to have the former members participate as well?
Yes.
Okay. So Mrs. Milton and Mr. Schmier will also do an evaluation, and those will be incorporated as well. So if you don't feel comfortable doing the ratings, you do not have to do the ratings. Definitely some feedback on the evidence would be helpful, though. Okay. Any other questions on the evaluation process? No? Okay.
All right. And next, we have reviewing, review of the bullying intervention plan. So as part of the integrated monitoring review, there were a few recommended changes that needed to be made. Principals did review those and implement those changes, and we included them in the school committee packet. There was nothing of true, I mean, not substance, but there weren't any real changes, although we did add, for example, staff and some of the protected classes to the document, so that those should have all been highlighted in red.
Yep, there was, I mean, this is a very comprehensive document to begin with, so it was really just a, you know, updating that definition of the target, and thank you for including it.
That made sense, thank you.
Yep. Okay, does anyone have any questions on the bullying prevention intervention plan? No? Okay. So move to approve the revisions to the West Bridgewater Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan. Is there a second? Second? Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so moved.
All right, and next we have Mrs. Jufre to give a nature's classroom update. And I just want to say that I did go up there on Tuesday, right after breakfast, and I stayed through some of their field groups. I got some good exercise checking out a bunch of the field groups, and there are some hills there. If you haven't been, there's some good hills to go up and down. And I had lunch with them, and then we did some classes. And I will say that it's an amazing experience for our kids, and I can't thank our educators enough. I tell you, it's, it's a lot on them, and I appreciate what they do, the chaperones that go. It's, it's a working trip. You're always on, even though you may have some off time, you're always on call. And I have always said, I think it's the greatest trip we offer in our district for our kids, so I appreciate the people that make it happen, so.
I'll pass that along to the staff who went. I made it clear right after my interview, I was like, "I don't camp." But I did go up on Monday, and I followed the bus up. It was absolutely incredible, nothing like I was envisioning. Like, it's not camping, they're like in dorm rooms, it's amazing. And the staff was incredible, and the kids were super excited, it was just, it was really cool. So Melissa Wenzel couldn't be here tonight, so she wrote up some things for me to say, so I'm going to read those. The Howard sixth grade has, has had yet another successful trip to the newly renamed Outdoor Classroom. We have to shift our language, it's not Nature's Classroom, now it's Outdoor Classroom. One hundred and six students, ninety-five percent of the grade, participated in an outdoor education experience that focused on social, emotional, and collaborative learning experiences. This trip focuses on the four Cs: curiosity, cooperation, care, and courage. They embed these ideas into all the activities planned. Students participated in a variety of classes, field groups, and ate meals together. They connect with their peers in a way that can only be created through this special trip. They created lasting memories while completing hands-on activities, singing songs, team-building challenges, and stepping out of their comfort zones. They persevered through challenges and learned about themselves. When students returned from the trip, they reflected on their time there, and each student was able to share how the trip impacted them and helped them grow. We are so grateful to the parents who volunteered their time to support our students during this trip. We also gratefully acknowledge the financial support from the Howard trustees. They provided us with full and partial scholarships that allowed several students to attend who otherwise may not have been able to. We are proud to continue this tradition and look forward to continuing it in the future.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
It's a fantastic trip, really is. Okay, that brings us to our unfinished business. So our next meeting date is June second, I believe it is.
Correct.
Yes. And our traditional start time is six o'clock. That night is the athletic awards.
Correct.
Correct? So the athletic awards are also at six o'clock. So we've discussed in the past, we've traditionally changed the time of our meeting to five o'clock. So are there any, do you guys have any problems with that time, or you okay with that?
Yep, yours for me.
Okay, perfect. All right, move to change next meeting, the June second meeting to five o'clock PM start time. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Okay, CPAC update. So the mission of West Bridgewater Special Education Parent Advisory Council is to build inclusive schools and communities. Oh, hold on, I think I'm looking at the wrong update. Nope, I'm not, I'm good. We do this by supporting families of students with IEPs and 504s and including regular education parents by offering advice, advocacy, and opportunities for education and community building. Congratulations to the winners of our sixth annual Grant of Gratitude, Mrs. Erica Gillis and Mr. David Carlinow. We appreciate all that you do for the students of West Bridgewater. Our May event is our 2025 graduation seat raffle. For twenty dollars and twenty-five cents, you can enter to win four priority seats at this year's graduation. Entry forms and donations are due by Friday, May twenty-third, to the Middle Senior High School main office or online, and the winner will be announced on Sunday, May twenty-fifth. Don't miss this chance to win a great view of every moment with this year's graduates. Congratulations, class of 2025. Please join us for our next board meeting here at the Middle Senior High School Learning Commons on May twentieth at six o'clock. In the words of Marco Pizzari, "Diversity and inclusion, which are the real grounds for creativity, must remain at the center of what we do." For more information about the West Bridgewater CPAC and this year's past events, you can find us on Facebook at Inclusion Matters MA or by visiting our website at www.inclusionmattersma.com. Okay, that brings us to subcommittees. So the first one in the bucket is the Student Advisory Subcommittee. Do you have an update for us tonight?
Me too.
All right. Or anything else you'd like to share?
Mm-hmm.
Go for it.
Seniors had a fun night performing in their first senior spotlight. We hope this will become an annual tradition where seniors can show off their talents for their community. Congratulations to Colin Meyer, who was a senior spotlight winner. A basketball team was held, a basketball fundraiser was held last week to support mental health. Ten teams competed on the court. WB Athletics partnered with the No Soul organization, which collaborates with the National Alliance on Mental Health to raise awareness and funds to help build better lives for those battling mental illness. It was a great afternoon for an amazing cause. Thank you to Ms. Hamel and Mr. Jones for organizing this event. This Friday, everyone should come up to see the grand march in the Middle Senior High School gym at 6:00 PM. We can't wait to see our juniors all dressed up for their exciting night. After the prom, juniors and their dates will head over to the canoe club for a night of dancing.
Thank you.
I gotta say, the basketball game was great and raised some good money and a lot of community support, and the senior spotlight was awesome. The students did a great job. Mr. Mayor, Mrs. Brogna were wonderful on stage, and it, they didn't do Mr. WB, so this took the place, and it, I think far exceeded all expectations. They were, the kids had a lot of fun, and it was well-attended, so great job.
Okay, and the next is the Policy Subcommittee. So we do still have some policies open that I reviewed this last month. So the first three I want to discuss are JKAA Physical Restraints of Students, JICFB Bullying Prevention, and JIC Student Discipline. I did not find any edits required here, so I'm gonna make a motion that we close these policies with no edits to them. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on that. So these were open as a result of the Integrated Monitoring Review, where there were some partial, or partial implementation in areas. So looking at these policies to make sure that our policies were in line with MASC and that the procedures are reflective of the policies. And at our last, we just reviewed the bullying plan. JIC, the Student Discipline, is gonna be next month, that will come up in the student handbooks, and the physical restraint of students procedure was approved last month. So our policies are clean and they're good to go. Do you have any questions on those? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Okay, the other policies that we have open are a handful of A policies. So I'm gonna move to adopt the following policies as written. AC, non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. ACR, non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. ACA, non-discrimination on the basis of sex. ACA-R, non-discrimination on the basis of sex under Title IX, including sex-based harassment. ACAB, sexual harassment. ACE, non-discrimination on the basis of disability. ACGA, civil rights grievance procedure. And ACGB, Title IX, sexual discrimination grievance procedure. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion on these. So a couple of them were just reviewed, I'm gonna go through them briefly. These were open as a result of some federal regulation changes that occurred in January. MASC sent out legal advisement that we revert all of these policies back to our pre-summer 2024 policies. So all of these policies were revised in August, they were adopted, we adopted them in September. Because of the change to the federal definition of sex-based discrimination, MASC continues to review all of these policies again that were just revised, so I anticipate that they will be reopened in the next couple of months, actually probably over the summer. But for now, the recommendation for MASC is that we revert back to all of our old policies. So AC, the major changes on AC, the definition was updated to remove sex stereotypes and sex characteristics. Gender identity is still included here, though. And then retaliation is included in this policy, including the definition of retaliation, which was removed from policy ACA-B. Okay? AC-R, again, same thing, the definitions were updated, and the Title IX, sex-based harassment is included here. That was also removed from ACA-B. Let's see. ACA-B, sexual harassment, was some pretty significant revisions. This had all, this included all of the Title IX information that was changed back in September. So the title was changed, removing sex-based harassment, it's now just sexual harassment. Retaliation was removed, it's included in AC. The revised, the revised definition of sexual harassment, and then the procedures and process for Title IX are included here. ACE, non-discrimination on the basis of disability, there were no changes, there's no need to change this, this policy did not change last summer. This policy did not change last summer. And then the final two are ACGB, Title IX, sexual discrimination grievance procedure, and ACGA, civil rights grievance procedure. So these two were brand new as of last summer. Prior to MASCE doing this whole overhaul of policy revisions, these grievance procedures were administrative documents, but with the new revision, they became associated documents approved by the school committee. I think that rather than rescinding these and putting them back on administration, it makes sense to adopt the changes that were recommended by MASCE and keep them in place as school committee documents. They're just very clean procedures to be implemented in association with the A policies. Any questions on these? No? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. And then there is one more here. Move to rescind the following policy. ACA-R, non-discrimination on the basis of sex under Title IX, including sex-based harassment. So again, this was just a huge policy overhaul, and this information was written fully in the summer of 2024, when MASCE rolled out those new, the committee guidance and procedural documents. So prior to that, procedural documents were owned and managed by the administration. So all of this is included in the policies we just fixed, if that makes sense. All right. Did I already make the motion? I'm already tired. Okay, move to, I'll do it again, move to rescind ACA-R, non-discrimination on the basis of sex under Title IX, including sex-based harassment. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, we already did it. Any further? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved. That's it for policies. I do want to say, in your folder, I do have a policy subcommittee report. We did discuss this last month with, with Mrs. Milton. We thought we had everything opened and closed, but with these still lingering, we now officially have reviewed everything within the three-year cycle. So during this school year, we reviewed Section B, which is school committee governance and operations, Section C, general school administration, Section I, instruction, and Section J, students. They were reviewed, they were revised when necessary. We just discussed the non-discrimination and sexual harassment policies, so those are all in line. And then additionally, JICFB, JIC and JKAA were reviewed following the results of DESI's IMR, as we already discussed. So as of May 5th, 2025, all policies have been reviewed and up to date and are in line with MASCE. This completes the three-year cycle for the entirety of the West Bridgewater Policy Index. So moving into the new three-year cycle, the policy subcommittee will begin cross-referencing portions of each section and auditing to determine district procedural compliance with policies. There is a super, a piece of superintendent ongoing evaluation here. So the relevant indicators were 2B, human resources management, 2D, laws, ethics, and policies, 3B, sharing responsibility, and 4B, cultural proficiency. So I just wanted to say that during this time period, Mr. Boddle responded promptly to questions regarding open policies, even when we tagged him at 11 o'clock at night. If he was unclear on an answer, he immediately consulted his administrators in order to provide the necessary information. Through thoughtful discussion and collaboration, Mr. Boddle has demonstrated that policies are a priority, particularly policy compliance with federal and state regulations. One area noted for improvement, both through observation through this last year and through the DESI IMR, is the implementation of procedures through development of relevant procedural documents. So that includes the restraint procedures that were already reviewed, the student handbooks that are being done next month, the bullying plan, those grievance documents as well, and then we had already discussed the technology procedures.
Yes.
I tagged you on that today. So I felt that Mr. Boddle was proficient in all areas with needs improvement in that 2D, just to make sure that our procedures are up to date. Any questions on that?
No.
No. So I know we have new committees. Is there anything else anyone wants to share from the committees? No? So we do need to, next month, discuss goals for each subcommittee. Each subcommittee should have a set of goals annually, so just kind of be thinking about that. There's information on the MESU website on what those goals should look like. All right, are there any questions or recommendations, things for further discussion? No? Okay. The next regular school committee meeting is June 2nd, here in the middle senior high school learning commons at 5 o'clock. I now move to enter executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining with the West Bridgewater Education Association pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, and to not reconvene in open session. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this is a roll call vote, Mrs. Miaszkowski.
Okay. Greg and Eddie?
Yes.
Lozari?
Yes.
Miaszkowski, yes. Waller?
Yes.
Rents? I'm sorry.
That's all right. Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to repeat, we have Greg and Eddie, yes. Lozari, yes. Miaszkowski, yes. Waller, yes. Rents, yes?
Reach.
Reach, yes, sorry, I'm going to, I'll get there. So that is five yeses, so we are going to go.
All right, so moved. Happy good night, everyone.